Environment Department is not following federal law with they they think EPA not have a kind with the Environment Department to bring them back in. Why?
Well, I think the answer to your question is that if the state of New Mexico is not enforcing the report under its authorized power using the hazardous waste stack, there is a process to have EPA take back the program. And the kind of that would be an upsetting development in New Mexico, but that's what they would do. The EPA is not actively involved in administering the hazardous waste stack in New Mexico. The Environment Department is, and it's not their choice, it's their duty under that program to require the hazardous waste stack to be enforced for hazardous waste.
But Mr. Chair, I think we're stuck in a hamster wheel here, so I will I will stop my final question. Thank you. Other questions? How does the board wish to proceed? Just chairman, I don't know if Council Sanchez has any questions. Council Sanchez, do you have any questions or suggestions on our next steps?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I don't have any questions of counsel. The commission, I think, has had an opportunity for discussion. If it deems appropriate, it can certainly entertain a motion on the question of jurisdiction. Thank you.
Okay, so the issue before us in agenda items is 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 do the petitioners have standing in this matter? And I think probably appropriate at this time to to have a motion and and resolve that question.
Will there be time for public comment?
Council Sanchez, the question was asked, can the public have an opportunity to comment on this?
No, I don't think that would be appropriate.
I believe that's that's true because this again is the evidence has already been presented.
It is.
Okay.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Just one, just so there isn't any potential confusion as the commission entertains a motion on standing. Ms. Chai in her oral arguments suggested or asked the commission to adopt the recommendation of the hearing officer. I I just want to make a distinction between the recommendation of the hearing officer as a as a conclusion, if you will, and his thinking or findings in reaching that recommendation. I don't know that the commission needs to necessarily adopt the findings or for as such as as they are in the report and can simply either adopt the conclusion, the recommendation, or or make its own. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Again, I would entertain a motion to either find that petition is not standing or find that they do not. Mr. Chair. Having heard the oral arguments today and having seen the briefs that the hearing officer required of all the parties as well as the hearing officers summary report. I would make a motion that the petitioners have not met the burden of proving standing. And therefore, the commission denied the permit based on lack of standing. And move for a second.
Mr. Chairman clarifies the motion is to deny the petition.
The petition. Second. Yes. So if the movement is seconded, I would entertain any discussion from the commission on the motion. Motion to deny the petition. Mr. Chair.
Chair Thompson?
Yeah, Council Sanchez, go ahead.
I think we might have some problems with that particular phrasing. The commission initially, when this petition came before it granted the petition, so I think it's already granted the petition. I think the more appropriate term might be to dismiss the petition for lack of standing. Thank you.
Dismissed the petition for standing. Would you accept that, open it lower? Yes, potatoes. And Jonas, would you accept that? Okay. Commissioner Brinkert.
You know, we have, we actually have put the field decisions that say that commissioners bring their experience with them to the commission. That's part of what why we're on here. We have experience in these jobs. I would say in my experience, this provision 12B, this is, this is something that the agencies deal with on a regular basis. It certainly has been issued when I was at the Energy and Natural Resources Department, particularly we dealt with it, say, at refineries. Where there would be a waste stream that was at hazardous waste there. And the hazardous waste bureau was in charge of that. Any spills that came from that and the purpose and the division. But there were waste streams also at that facility that were totally non-hazardous waste. The hazardous waste bureau is not in charge of it. Instead, the Energy Minerals Department has instituted an agency of this commission for those types of facilities, issued a discharge permit for those non-hazardous waste places. Takes a lot of coordination, takes a lot of effort between the agencies to make it work. Every time there's a spill, you've got to characterize it and figure out is it hazardous waste, is it non-hazardous waste, who has jurisdiction? But that's how it works. It's not an either or situation where you either have a hazardous waste permit or you have a discharge permit. Often you have both of the facilities. So therefore, you know, it's certainly from my experience in interpreting a facility, when it says activity or condition, it doesn't say facility, doesn't say we've kicked out of the whole facility once the hazardous waste bureau arrives. Or that the hazardous waste bureau is kicked out once the groundwater bureau. The agencies worked again. I would assume that if if there wasn't, there was a spill at this facility and it was determined it had hazardous waste in it, hazardous waste bureau would be there. They'll clean it up. So I think that that the injury that has been described here doesn't exist. The harm is caused by the refusal to issue a hazardous waste stack permit. That is what the injury is clearly stated in the pleadings and in the argument today. It's not our jurisdiction to issue a hazardous waste permit or to prevent the issue. And we have no way to remedy that. We have nobody to tell the Environment Secretary, go out and issue a hazardous waste permit simply outside of our authority. So therefore, I don't think there's any in here, any remedy we can do that deals with their injury. So therefore, that's why I will support the motion as presented.
Other question, comments? Council Sanchez, does this require a roll call vote or can we do it?
You can, it does not require a roll call vote, but again, I would renew my my request that the phrasing of the motion be reconsidered to dismiss the petition rather than deny the permit review.
Yes, I think Mr. Dominguez did agree to that change in language. So are we?
I'm sorry, the I didn't hear that very well. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, it was. It was not very loud. So are we ready to vote on this? All right, so the the Ms. Jones, could you restate the the motion just so that we're clear on this?
Yes. The motion was made that the petitioners have not met the burden of proving standing and that it should be denied, the permit should be denied based on lack of standing. And the friendly amendment is that it should be dismissed.
Yes.
And Chair Thompson, I'm sorry to reverse myself here so quickly, but just so there is no ambiguity here, let's take a roll call vote on the motion, please.
Okay, just in one moment.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, the motion can be to dismiss the petition and not dismiss the permit.
I'm sorry, did I say I yes, to dismiss the petition?
Good catch.
Yeah, thank you for.
Okay, and council has recommended that this be a roll call vote, so Ms. Jones, would you forward the motion?
Yes. Commissioner Brinkert having vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Congalario? Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Fry? Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes.
Commissioner Catherine?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosatos?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velasquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Zemlik?
Yes.
Chair Thompson, you, the motion passed with 11 in favor, one abstaining, one absent.
So my understanding is if the petitioners do not have standing, then mission item, agenda item eight is moved. Is that correct?
I agree.
Okay, so I would suggest, you think the exalted authority of my position, I declare that we are going to take a 10 minute break and we will reconvene at 10:45. I'm sorry. Just quickly, Mr. Chair, before we do that, I would like to thank our hearing officer for the handsome amount of work that he has put in on this particular subject. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you. So we will reconvene at 10:00. We'll restart if we're not staying, we will we'll step outside and continue the conversations. I think everyone's here, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So the next item on our agenda is agenda item nine, the QCC number 23-31A, in the matter of Cannon Air Force Base petition for review of the NAB determination that the discharge permit is required for pilot study activities. And so I'm not sure who's going to present that to the commission. Favorite?
I don't see anyone on from the I don't see anyone from Cannon. Okay. Major, Captain Tress?
Major.
Major Tress, he's not, I don't, he's not on the meeting.
Council Sanchez, what should we do?
Pam, did you send a copy of the agenda to Major?
Yes, I did.
Then Chair Thompson, he has noticed, I'm not sure why he's not appeared. He would be the one initially speaking regarding the petition Cannon Air Force Base has filed. I I see someone that's opened up their their tile, perhaps that's the major. Is that correct?
No.
Commission members, is this?
Okay, that's Andrew Knight, thank you. I just want to make sure that wasn't him. Then absent anyone here on behalf of Cannon Air Force Base, I would suggest that the commission postpone rather than table this agenda item until the next regular meeting of the commission.
Mr. Chair, it's a joint motion between the Air Force and the Environment Department. So anybody in the Environment Department?
Well, Commissioner Brinkert, that's correct, but the initial or underlying petition was filed only by Cannon Air Force Base.
Okay. It seems to me that it it looks like neither representative for the Air Force, Major Tress, nor this child, you representing the department, I'd like the motions in sci-fi, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, this piece of child, I'm in the Department, I'm pinch hitting, and it was just briefed by the groundwater quality bureau that this is apparently a joint motion for an extension.
Yes.
And so I'm not sure what Council Sanchez recommended on that, but I can represent the department.
This is a weird one, if they're requesting an extension, but don't show up, re-extend it till next month, is that an automatic extension? I guess that's a rhetorical question.
Mr. Chair. I think they're just asking for stay so they can use negotiations. Without them present, we could approve that joint motion. Our multiple practices common or not, but.
Chair, just one question for council. We didn't notice any action on this joint motion to stay. Would it be appropriate to take action on it at this point? Or would we be better off noticing it on next month's agenda?
So Council Sanchez, I think there's two questions before you. First of all, can we approve this order granting a motion to stay? And secondly, do we even need to take action on it?
Well, yes, you wouldn't take action on the motion. I I'll say this, Chair Thompson, it's a procedural motion, not a dispositive motion. You can certainly, unless you direct otherwise, you can certainly move or or act on the motion in the absence of of a meeting or without being in a meeting. I I just find it peculiar that the party filing the petition is not, after having been received, after having received notice, isn't here. It it almost begins to look like an ex parte action by the commission. But again, I think you can, as the hearing officer, act on the motion outside of a commission meeting.
Okay, Ms. Chai.
Yes, this, Mr. Jason, we heard from the groundwater quality bureau went to speak and just sort of that quick response to what kind of that just said, I don't think oral argument was necessary on this.
Okay. Council Sanchez, can you hear the the comments from the audience? Ms. Chai?
Not very well.
Ms. Chai is introducing Jason Herman, so Jason, would you come up?
Chair Thompson, can we, as a suggestion, can Pam try to get a hold of the major and see we can't just take a brief recess and have him appear? That would resolve the problem.
Mr. Herman?
So I think, good morning, Commissioner. I can give you just a really quick history of how this got here. I think that the presence is not necessarily necessary, but you know, it's determined that we, the groundwater quality bureau, I'm Jason Herman, I'm the program manager for the groundwater quality bureau's permitting section, the pollution section, where this permit would live. We issued a discharge from required letter to Cannon Air Force Base, and while we have a whole bunch of other stuff going on, they have requested the opportunity to negotiate with us on all the matters as a combined element, and that would include this. And so they're asking essentially for a stay on, there's, when we issue a discharge from or discharge from required letter, there's a timeframe that they have to appeal that. And so they have appealed it, but they want to include it in their negotiation. So it's, it's almost like they wanted a placeholder in that they have appealed the decision, but it's part of the larger part of negotiations. And therefore, that's super 90 day stay on that portion of it.
Yes, and Council Sanchez, I'll give that to you in a second. Commissioner Dominguez would like to offer some thoughts. Yeah. So two issues at hand here is the petition for review. And then the most joint motion for stay in this portion of that. And granted, it was filed at T D, but powered therefore, this is on the agenda. We have had verbal motions for stay on agenda items, commission have taken action on previously. So there is precedence precedence there of taking action on the joint motion for stay. I think the commission can proceed forward with that. Or the commission chair serving as interim hearing officer could take action on that motion. My preference would be that we take action on that motion because otherwise the the filing of the petition for review starts a clock. That requires actions by the commission or other parties in between, and it becomes complicated if we don't have a stopgap measure in there, i.e. the motion for stay. So with that said, I think it's prudent for the commission to move forward on the joint motion for stay at this point in time, or that the chair serving as de facto hearing officer take action on the motion to stay so that we don't get caught up in a time crunch on the original petition. Council Sanchez?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I I have no disagreement with what Commissioner Dominguez has said, but he does raise the question of typically, when we grant a stay of this sort, we get a waiver on the record from both council waiving the 90 day scheduling requirement. I'm not sure how we would do that when Mr. when Major Tress is is not here.
We have a order that was loaded to the documented matters filed yesterday that is signed by Major Tress, Chris Atencio and Bruce Blaisel. So does that preclude the necessity of having the Cannon Air Force Base being present?
No, perhaps you've misunderstood me, Chair Thompson. He certainly, by filing the petition, Cannon Air Force Base has entered an appearance. Certainly by filing the motion, the department has, Department Counsel has entered an appearance. That isn't the question. The question is 7465P requires that the petition be scheduled within 90 days. Typically, the commission requires a waiver by council or both sides of that 90 day time limit. I'm not sure how we would have council for Cannon Air Force Base do that when he is absent.
I believe that that was stipulated in the last meeting verbally by both councils.
In reading the joint motion, it's specifically their motion for stay is they're asking for a 90 day stay, so a 90 day waivers a moot point. So Mr. Mr. Chair, with with that said, and to keep things moving forward, I would make a motion, the commission accept the joint motion to stay permit, permit in proceedings in regard to the QCC 23-31A in the matter of Cannon Air Force Base petition for review of New Mexico Environment Department's determination that a discharge permit is required for pilot study activities.
I just want to clarify, and maybe somebody from the department can help us, but the first paragraph of the joint motion asks for 90 days, but final paragraph asks for 64 days. Can we add some clarity on what the request is for?
I have to take a moment for a review of the petition. Very last sentence, Jason.
I think it's 64 days from.
I think July 11th is your, when you state DP 873, the last period, 64 days would make them agree.
Okay, I have a second. Thank you. Discussion. It's been moved and seconded to accept the joint motion to stay the permit proceedings. To be clear, that would be until July 11th. Is that correct? Until July 11th. Right. We want to do a roll call vote? I think this one, we can do by voice vote. All in favor of a frequent motion to accept the stay signify we're saying aye. Me opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Agenda item 10 is our next meeting.
Excuse me, Chair, Chair Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Going back to the matter the commission just left, are you wanting to appoint a hearing officer or do you want to continue as the hearing officer until one is appointed?
Do we need a hearing officer?
That's the choice of the commission.
He's not asking for a hearing, so I I don't think we need a hearing officer.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, agenda item 10, again, it's the next meeting. Uh, before we set the next meeting, Pam, can you, uh, give us some idea of what we will need to discuss in the near future?
I, I don't have anything for the, the meeting would be the second Tuesday, that's June 13th. And I don't have any docketed matters at this point.
If we have no docketed matters, would, would the commission like to just, um, postpone the June meeting until July?
I mean, if something comes up.
Yeah.
I mean, you could always cancel it.
Yes.
Set it for June, whatever.
Good suggestion. So let's go ahead. We'll, we'll schedule a meeting for June 13th.
Okay.
And then, uh, if, if there's nothing pressing, we will, we'll, uh, reschedule for, for July. Mr. Heron?
We anticipate having multiple items that we placed on the agenda.
Okay. For the benefit of the people in my video land, the groundwater quality bureau anticipates having multiple items for the, uh, June meeting, so. All right, we're, we're scheduled for June 13th then.
Since, um, this meeting has been complicated, you know. That means, for one more thing in there, it's in regard to our upcoming meetings, um, for those of us, although it's only a handful, for those of us that do have to travel to San Fati logistics of traveling to San Fati has become more complicated over the years. I think it would be a good idea, and I'd like to make the request that we, when we put the notice out 10 days ahead of time, that we have some semblance of a draft agenda at that point in time. So that those of us, as well as the public, kind of know what the timeframes are for a commission meeting. Is it two hours or is it two days? Those are important factors when I'm trying to make plans to travel halfway across the state. And the other thing is that does follow suit with how our opening meetings Act resolution reads. Because it does indicate that notice the regular meetings of the commission shall be given at least 10 days prior to the meeting date. The meeting of the shell include a proposed agenda containing a list of specific items as to be discussed or transacted by the commission. For information on how the public may obtain a copy of such an agenda. Now, it does give the exception in a draft, it is 72 hours, but I think most major items we should allow 10 days prior to the meeting. Um.
Yes, sir, thank you. And, and Counsel Sanchez and I have talked about that a little bit. It's my understanding that according to Open Meetings Act, we need to have a agenda with all action items at least 72 hours before the meetings. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. That would be the minimum, uh, time for posting and distributing the, the final agenda for the commission meeting.
Yes, so that's, that's something to keep in mind. Okay, um, you know, what's not on this agenda, but usually is on agendas such as this, is old business and new business. Do we have any new business? Hearing on, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Doc, I was just wondering whether Counsel Sanchez had any litigation report on.
I, I don't, um, typically, we, we don't put that on the agenda. I would be glad to. There is, um, the couple of matters pending, actually one matter pending. Uh, that's the appeal that the NMD filed against the commission for the determination that a TMDL constitutes rulemaking. Uh, the Court of Appeals has put that on the general calendar. NMD recently filed a motion to supplement the record, uh, in hoping to have, uh, a video recording from 2020, which precedes the filing of the petition by almost two years. Made part of the record proper. I responded to that. That is now pending before the commission. The NBD has filed its briefing chief, notwithstanding the pending motion. Uh, I will be filing a response or rather answer brief within 45 days from the filing of the NBD's briefing chief, which was last Wednesday.
Thank you. The other litigation news that is relevant is that, uh, the commission, the individual commissioners are no longer identified in a suit that El Paso Water Utility has filed federal court against the NBD. I've never been named in a federal lawsuit. Popped my attention. So, again, uh, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just noticed, Major Treats is on.
Correct, ma'am.
Major Treats in your absence, we, uh, the commission approved the motion to stay in the proceedings until July 11th, as requested. It would have been helpful to have you join us, but I, and I appreciate you joining us now, but we did approve the.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I was in the back of, with a medical procedure, so I joined as soon as I came out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. We're done. We're entertaining a motion to adjourn.